Caldwell?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Leha?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Habon?
Here.
Palaszak?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Look, items of attendance for mayor.
Okay, we have two items on the committee of the whole agenda tonight. One is the working cat program. The other is discussion regarding the ordinance for the formal bidding as well as the city control. So, Amber, do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Amber Dawn from my office will go over the working cat program.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, fabulous. Okay, hi. My name is Amber and I am the city administrator's assistant, so I assist Ruth. I've been working on a rodent abatement program that encompasses many different avenues. One of those avenues is the working cat program, which is what I'm here to discuss with you today. So, what I'm looking to do is get an assessment of how many working cat colonies we have in Berwyn currently, which we do have some. And then we have a lot of feral cats in Berwyn that are not part of a working colony. They're just feral cats. And so, I'm looking to collect those animals, put them through the trap neuter release program, which I'll explain in a moment, and maybe set them up with a family or at least release them back on the streets where they can do what they naturally do. So, before, I want to bring in more cats to Berwyn. I want to get an assessment of the cats that we have. And I'm looking for information as to where those cats are so that I can compare that data with rodent sightings in the area. Does that make sense? Okay. So, what we're looking to do is you have an ordinance in front of you. And that is just to collect the feral cats that we have in town and put them through a trap neuter release process, which is trap them, you take them to a vet, you... ...outside cats or just release them back onto the street where you found them.
Don't they also get chipped too?
Oh, yes, and they get microchipped. Thank you. It would be nice if we have volunteer residents who want to have these working cat colonies in their backyards so that the cats do have a caregiver. But that's something that we'll have to work towards. So, let's see. So, we're looking to do a survey with the citywide survey with the community, asking questions about, do you have a working cat colony? Do you, are you interested in becoming a working cat family? Do you have rodents in your area? I want people to self-identify and then try to encourage people to volunteer, to partner with the city for this program. And I have Ellen Miles here from Cat Van Do, which is an organization that does the TNR program, who has working cat programs, to tell us more about it and answer any questions that you guys might have. And then I'll come back up and ask, answer any questions that you have regarding like the city side. Ellen, do you want to come up?
It was actually Ms. Miles that informed us that we already have colonies in Berwyn, which we didn't know about. So, that's why we're trying to get it identified.
Hi.
Hi.
I am Ellen Miles. I am the founder and director of Cat Van Do. We're a trap neuter return rescue group. I started working with cats when I moved to Maywood. There were a huge amount of cats in my neighborhood. There were cats in my yard. Didn't ever hear of TNR, trap neuter return. But I'm pretty resourceful. I found out places where I could borrow traps, take cats in to give them fixed for low cost. I did 19 cats out of my yard within the first five months of 2005. And then met somebody that was feeding up and down the street. We did another 55 cats. So, there was 74 cats within the immediate vicinity of, what was that, my home? That's when I found out the huge problem. People love the cats because they took the rodents away. But when there were too many, they would just poison them, which is a horrible way to die. And so, we started Cat Van Do. We incorporated in 2007. In November of 2007, we became a sponsor in accordance with Cook County's Managed Care Feral Cats Ordinance that governs all of Cook County when it comes to cats, even if you're home rule. It's to everyone's advantage. TNR has been going on in Chicagoland for at least 40 years. But I swear to God, this year, there's more cats ever than ever. People get free cats out of yards and they have them for a while. They let them go in and out. They make babies. Their babies make babies. Cats can have, cats can get pregnant when they're four months old. And on and on and on. The old method, which was trap and remove and kill, obviously not effective. It's been going on for years. It just doesn't work. There's something called the vacuum effect. When cats are removed, other cats move in and take over where the other cats were eating. People that feed cats love their cats. Even though many times they can't touch them, they do often become friendly to their feeder. They're not adoptable, but their feeder friendly. And they're very paranoid. For years, it's been very difficult to get people to trust us enough to let us trap their cats, take them away, get them sterilized, and then bring them back. And what we do is they have their surgery. They do get their rabies. They get their FERCP vaccine, which is for distemper and a few other things. They get microchipped. They get Revolution for fleas, some intestinal parasites. And they get their left ear tipped, just cut straight across. And that's how we can determine, okay, that cat's been through the program. So, and the cats that are on the street now are pretty much the result of humans. They let them go. They don't get them sterilized, which brings me to a very little point here. It would be wonderful if Berwyn, if everyone would promote spay neuter of their own pets because that's the problem. That's how these cats continue to create. I think it's Norris Lake offers $20 rebate on sterilization for any resident. And, you know, you guys might want to think about that. The biggest complaint about cats is cat poop. Biggest complaint. There are ways to deter cats from going in your yard. You can sprinkle a lot of cinnamon, but of course, you have to do that a lot. Or coffee grounds, which is great for the garden too, promotes worms. And then there's something called the scarecrow. And this is mostly effective during summer months because it's a motion sensitive water squirter. So, if you've got cats coming in from a particular area, you set up the water squirter. It's hooked up to the resident that doesn't want cats in the yard. It's hooked up to their hose. And then anytime a cat approaches, they get squirted with water. And it's not too long before they know, oh, don't want to go there. Don't want to get wet. And I believe the scarecrows have a 50-foot span of motion. I think they're about 50 bucks. Another complaint is birds, killing birds. In 2011, the Smithsonian did a study about bird death. And it was biased. It was based on manipulated data. And it was disproven. They said that, they tested 69 birds. And they said that there was a 47% that got killed by cats. When actually, if you investigate and look at the numbers, it was like a 17%. It's never fun to see a cat go for a bird. It happened to me. Walk, I have a, I walk a dog and we have a cat that follows us. And lo and behold, we're walking by a bush and a cute little bird jumps out and the cat jumps on it and kills it. But cats are not the main predators of birds. The threat for birds is actually human. It's pesticides and it's loss of habitat. So, while it's not fun to watch a cat kill a bird, they're not the biggest perpetrators of their deaths. Okay. I had talked to Amber about the kind of traps that we use. And I'd be more than happy to talk to whoever's going to be trapping cats around here about the humane and more effective way to trap a cat, especially if you're transferring it into a cage. They're called true catch traps. They're not cheap. They're about 90 bucks a trap now. When I first started, they were maybe 60, maybe 50. I don't know. But they're, they're the best for a couple of reasons. They're gentle. And most of the traps, and the traps I believe the village has, most villages are, they have a diagonal plate that slams down when the cat goes in the back of the trap. That could scare the cat. It could harm the cat. And it makes it very difficult to transfer that cat to a cage, like it, you guys worked with Cicero, I think. So, sometimes the cats go in those cages. And a couple of weeks ago, I was there and there was a woman with a cat in one of those silver traps. It was caught when she was going for another animal or probably a raccoon or something. It wasn't covered. The cat was mellow. The cat should be covered. Most of them freak out. My guess is it was a pet. And when she put that cat into the cage, that cat tore her arm up, you know? So, and that's because of the awkward way you have to manipulate the trap to get the cat out. What we can do for Berwyn is we can bring the cats. I'm assuming there's not going to be a lot because you're not going to, you're just getting cats when another animal doesn't go in the cage and a cat does. But we can take them through our vet. And I understand you have no place to hold them from trap date to clinic date. We can hold them for you for $10 a day, which is cheap. If they're sick, because that's another issue, it's 20 a day because we do treats at cats. Generally, it's a cold. Sometimes it's injuries. Our spay neuter vet, Dr. Mary Eisenmore and Don Schostrum, they, we, they travel. And we see them when they're at Cicero Wagon Tales. And she does remarkable work for very, very reasonable. So, there is that option. As to the working cats program, and I agree, why bring in cats from other areas? You've got plenty of cats in Berwyn. We have a number of registered colonies. As a sponsor, in accordance with the ordinance, every cat that goes through our system is registered. Their caretakers are registered. And we have well over 800, not in Berwyn, but we have well over 800 registered colonies. We're not the only trappers. At one point, it was just the sponsoring organization. Now, there's trappers galore. So, I have no idea where all of the TNR colonies are in Maywood or anywhere else because there's independents that are out there trapping all the time. I wish they would tell us. It's so much nicer when we know. And we do have to keep those people anonymous in accordance with the ordinance. But let's just say there's a colony on Block B that has to move. If I knew there was a colony on Block D, we could feed the food to that colony so that that cat would have a place to go. I don't know where to put them, you know? Because I don't know where the colonies are. Any questions so far?
Nope.
One of the reasons our, our, our community service officers do not trap feral cats. And one of the reasons is because we had pledged never to euthanize cats. They bring them to Wagon Tales. If nobody claims them in seven days, they're euthanized. So, we haven't trapped them. Now, we've been talking to the police department and we may have to get the traps that Ms. Miles is speaking about. We talked to them about trapping them so we could get them to Cat Van Do so we can go through that program and then get them back in the colony. I will tell you this. I have three feral cats on my block. I don't know that they're a colony. I don't have, I've never seen a rat on my block ever. So, I think they do the trick. We've examined, and I know Amber's done a lot of research in this. She's examined several other rodent predators. Obviously, too expensive, can't find them, owls or whatever it might be. So, this, we thought, was the best resolution. Plus that, where we know there's a colony, we can now move to a different type of... Amber, give me the word.
It's Evolve. It's the birth control...
Right.
Rodent bait instead of anticoagulant poisons that move up the food chain. And is, it gets into our wildlife and is very detrimental to their life expectancy.
We can move that over with that Evolve now.
Colonies are very effective. And by the way, a colony can be anywhere from one to 20, however many. It's just people that feed cats. And I don't know what the average number is. I don't think there is an average because you have people that feed them and don't do anything. And they're running rampant. And what would be nice is if we could identify some of the larger colonies and see about relocating some of those cats to areas where there's a high incidence of rodents. Again, why import cats? You have plenty of your own. With the working cats program, cats either relocate themselves, you know, depending on where the cats are coming from and if they are actually going to be moved to a particular yard. And during that relocation process, we set up two big dog cages. Inside the cage goes a shelter. And also, and we didn't talk about this, a covered litter box. They need a litter box that covers in there. And they stay there for about five weeks. Some people do four weeks. Some people do six weeks. We like to do five weeks. It has to be covered with plastic, you know, so they don't get hit by the elements. But they stay in there. And the new colony caretaker talks to them and makes them feel comfortable and puts the food in there. And the new colonies, the working cats program people that apply, their yard should be, have shrubbery, have greenery. Because if it's just flat sod, cat's not going to stay there. You know, they might go to the neighbors, but they need shrub. They need to feel comfortable and hidden in order for them to stay in a particular yard or area. What else? Any, oh.
Quick question on that?
Go for it.
So, you're saying when a cat is relocated, they stay inside of the, this enclosure for five weeks until, you know, essentially they acclimate?
Yeah.
And then they're released? So, they're not going out and about until that?
Not initially, no.
What we have built into our budget, though, is for those people that want to be, take care of the colony, we've included in our budget, Amber went out and priced some housing for the cats for the outside also. So, that, that's why our budget was raised. Alderman, you remember that? It's part of to cover some of those costs for people that want to do these colonies too.
And I understand CSOs are going to be monitoring? We could too because you're going to register them. But if they come through our system, we'll be registering them too. Did they see the copies of our caretaker agreement? Okay. Okay. We do have a caretaker agreement that all of our registered colony managers have to sign and agree to. Do they? Some do, some don't, you know? But essentially, it says food, water, shelter, TNR in a new cat, and monitor for health issues. And that's according, bless you, that's according to the Cook County ordinance.
Okay. Any questions?
This is maybe more of a question for Amber, but just, it sounds like part of the issue is finding caretakers who will take the cats and care for them. And there might be situations where we don't have someone lined up for that. In that case, like, how does, how would then that transition look, right? Will we just not then be trapping cats until we have someone identified to be able to do that five-week transition? Or is it, you know, wherever we find them, that's where they get released back to?
Well, we could do it, we could do a couple of ways. We could not trap the cats or like if the CSOs, what they do now is if they, if they accidentally get a cat in a trap, they just release it. We could continue to do that until we get caregivers, we'll call them caregivers, lined up. And then we, we want to do three cats per colony because they, they like them to have a friend and one sadly, ultimately, most likely will end up passing on. Just so you know, outdoor cats, feral cats, they have a like life expectancy of three years. So, they like to do three.
Sorry. Unless, if a cat is well cared for out there, if they have caretaker, food, water, shelter. We have colonies with cats that are 16, 17 years old.
Really? Okay, all right. Well, they live longer if they have a caregiver. Well done.
Turn it even out of the dumpster.
Right, right. So, we could, we could wait until we have a caregiver and then have the three cats and then give them to a caregiver. We could send them through the TNR program and release them back to where we found them and just let them roam and do their thing that they were doing before. Except for now, they won't be making babies and they're vaccinated for rabies. So, that's kind of how we want to do it. Ultimately, I would like to have them all with a caregiver because it expands their life expectancy. They're cared for. But if we don't have them, if we don't have enough caregivers, we don't want those cats to continually reproducing. And I don't want to euthanize them, right? Like, they're helpful for our ecosystem that we have created as humans. So, that's, that's my, my suggestion. I do already have several residents lined up wanting to take on cat colonies, just from my conversations with people. And one of the questions in the survey that we want to send out is, would you be interested in becoming a working cat family? And then also, what I'm thinking, we'll see if public, we'll see how Schiller feels about it. But if you have a working cat colony near your house, you get one of these fancy little signs on your street to let everybody know that there's cats crossing. Maybe it'll slow down traffic. Who knows? But just to let people know that we have working cats in the area, which also might bring awareness of our rodent issue. Maybe it'll encourage people to clean up their garbage, things like that, so.
Another question. Sorry, I don't mean to monopolize.
No, it's okay.
Is it, my understanding, there are already working cats currently in Berwyn?
Yes.
Okay. And do we know, are those cats, do they have assigned caregivers? Or are they just kind of outrunning?
Well, the people who put them there would know, but we don't know because they can't reveal the other information to us. That's why we're going on the survey, asking if people are caregivers already. Please let us know. They cannot tell us.
Right. Yeah, I can't get that information. I can tell you the number of TNR cats in Berwyn, but I don't know where they are. And I don't know if they're with caregivers or they're, they're just out and about. I, FOIA, Cook County. They have the number of cats?
How many cats do we have?
I want to say, I think it was 135. There's one colony of eight cats somewhere in Berwyn.
And that's what we're trying to identify so that we can match it with the statistics of where we see rodents.
So, we know approximate location where they are?
Nope.
So, how can we match with the statistics of knowing where the...
That's what the survey, that's what the survey.
Oh, I see, I see.
I, I have to ask people to self-identify. So, that's part of that survey. Like, if you're taking care of working cats, you know, please give us your address. Or if you have feral cats in your, on your street, what's your address? Because then I can kind of pinpoint. And then if we do have people just taking care of feral cats that have not gone through the TNR program, we can approach them and say, hey, would you like to be a working cat family? And so, that's kind of the idea. So, the ordinance that you have in front of you changes that instead of we, instead of taking the feral cats to a shelter, we take the feral cats and we put them through the TNR program so they're not being euthanized. They're, they're getting spayed or neutered, vaccinated, and then released onto the street. If we want to change that, amend that, to be placed with a working cat family, we can do that. So, this is just a draft ordinance. That's kind of a conversation starter.
So, I just made some...
How many working cats are in Berwyn? People that have cats don't consider them working cats. They just consider them cats that they're feeding. That's their colony.
Right.
There's some that are TNR and some that are... We've been, we've been doing TNR in Berwyn since 2007. And we're not the only ones, so.
Yeah. There are several, there's like eight different sponsors that have cat colonies in Berwyn, so.
And on this ordinance, I just made some changes to our current ordinance, just for discussion purposes. If there's something different that I need to add, just let me know. But we just did this, so Amber had something to work off of with respect to this program, so.
Yep.
Go ahead.
One of the questions I had is, are you, you're the point person for this project or...
I don't know.
Well, the reason I asked is because definitely you want like...
What did you ask?
She's going to be the point person. Because one of the things, in fact, the reason I asked is because you, one, you want someone that's passionate about it, the other, that's disappointed about it. Because you might get a neighbor that's going to be like, you know, I don't want to say the crazy cat person that's taking care of the cat like four houses down.
Right.
And someone's upset, you know, like, well, you need someone that's supportive of what's going on. What do you do? Because then you might step on someone's toes.
Here's the deal. The deal is, is that she's done this because Ruth and I asked her to take this on. And she's done all the research for us. So, if there is a complaint, they would have to come to my office.
So, I, so like, I just, I commend you. I think it's wonderful. I, you got, I think it's a wonderful project. I just want to know if this would be a point person. Especially if someone gives this survey and they're going to be like, whoa, I don't take care of the cats, but I know who does. And they don't want to say anything, but I will definitely do it.
I know takes care of them on my block. I don't know if he's going to answer it either, but I'm going to talk to him, so.
That is why one of the, I mean, we're not looking to penalize anybody. We're looking to provide support. And so, that's why I'm hoping that maybe the aldermen can encourage people to come forward. Neighbors will encourage people to come forward because we're, we're offering for support. And then this way, we, if we see that the cats are having a positive effect on our rodent population, as in mitigating them, then that gives us, it gives us a tool to use, a tool that we know works. And we've seen studies. We know that this works, but I always like more data.
Sarah?
I'm sorry. You are going to get complaints. And sometimes it's because that neighbor really doesn't love cats.
Sure, yeah, always.
And they're using the cats as a focus.
Years ago, we got so many complaints about people that care, keeping feral cat colonies. We used to get them all the time. But for us right now, this seems to be an ideal solution to the other problem we're having, so.
Yeah, I've been to, to the dead court, the court with the, anyway, people get cat complaints.
Mm-hmm.
I've been many times. And a lot of times, people are caretakers are paranoid because for years, they were threatened.
Right.
You know, and they get the cat and kill it. So, it takes a while to gain trust.
Alderman, you had a question?
So, I guess to kind of elaborate on that, I was going to ask, what is the biggest challenge in implementing this? What would it be for you? What would it be for the city?
Gathering the people that want to come forth and pay a different colony and getting someone to agree to being a colony caretaker. Getting the cats, nine cats, cats, it's very easy. You know, there's areas where there's an abundance in Berwyn. And if you ever see a cat with the left ear tipped, that cat's been through this program. More than likely, sometimes it's breast fight, more than likely.
I think the, the biggest challenge is always managing human behavior. So, education, outreach, accountability, all of the things will make sure that, you know, they're following all the guidelines of having a working cat colony. I think the biggest thing is leaving the food out because you're not supposed to leave the food out. You just, you feed them in the morning, you feed them in the evening. But then you take the food away so that other creatures are not eating the food. So, just, just education and following up. But, you know, I think that's also a great way to build community and build trust with our residents.
And the nice thing about feeding twice a day, I personally, we have a colony, Cat Van Do. I know all our cats. So, we do pre-feed all day. We don't feed at night because then the germs are coming. Although raccoons are coming late afternoon these days.
We're not recommending that people feed raccoons.
No, no, no. Neither can say that.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, a question.
Go ahead.
Is there, sorry, the number of caretakers that you're visiting in the present day? Likewise, is there a saturation point in terms of number of colonies in a, when you give it geographic area? So, if I have one on my block, is another block nearby? When you have two caretakers in the city, maybe next door, for example?
Right. So, it depends on the, the size of the cat's territory. And we don't want a bunch of competing cats, yes. We would have to look at the numbers. Right now, I'm not looking to add at all because I want to see what we have. And then I think that that is going to be determined on our rodent population. So, if we see that this is working and we got a lot of rodents over here, then I'm going to want to put a colony there. If that settles it, then that's all I'm going to ask for. You know what I mean? But that being... But, that being said, people could have a working cat colony or a TNR colony without going through the city of Berwyn. Like I said, we have tons already, so we could have some, but other people could also be doing it on their own. So that's why I'm trying to get the self, like, get people to self-identify, so I know what I'm working with. But yes, I'm sure that there could be saturation, but if we are spay and neutering all of the feral cats, that will cut down on the, the cat population, because there won't be so many having babies.
It'll also cut down on fighting. Once you neuter a cat and they lose their testosterone, which takes two weeks, there's no fighting, they quit fighting. And, I don't know, do you ever smell of a intact cat stray? It's noxious, it's god awful, and once they're neutered, that's gone too.
Yep.
And the howling and all that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Really quick, just to piggyback off of what Teddy was asking about, you know, in terms of maintenance, over time, right, identifying caretakers, knowing where cats are gonna be going, that sort of thing, is that, who, who's gonna be taking lead on that, right, on an ongoing basis?
As of right now, that young lady's taking the lead, and we'll see if we have to identify somebody else in the future, but right now, Zara's taking the lead.
All right, great, thank you.
I have no authority, obviously, no authority, but I do spree, I do speak crazy cat lady fluently, so I can speak to the crazy cat people.
I just have a quick clarifying question, so when we're talking to residents about this, right, like letting people know, you know, that this is potentially coming, are there three or so different kinds of people that could support, like maybe someone who already has a colony, that like, is already taking care of a colony, and maybe the cats have been through a process, right, that's one group maybe, and then maybe there's someone who's taking care of a colony and they're just like feeding cats, and they're just like taking care of some cats in the neighborhood? Is the, is there a third option for someone who isn't doing any of that, but like wants to?
Yes, absolutely.
So it could be like those three kinds of neighbors that could step up to support this, even if they don't have a colony right now, they could elect to be like, hey, if you guys get any cats, you can bring them over here to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Just making sure who's available in the universe to do this.
And if anybody wants me to come to a ward meeting and, and talk cats, and what we're looking for and what we're trying to do, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
And I do have, if you want the business card, on the reverse is the grow rate of cats.
Thank you. Thanks.
Guys.
I commend you for doing this program.
Ms. Miles, you could give, Ms. Miles, you give it to the clerk too, if you wanna put one up here. Amber, put one of her cards up here for, so the clerk has it. Okay, so the other item we have is the discussion regarding the ordinance for the threshold for formal bidding procedures, as well as the city comptroller. What? Of what? No, I haven't. Alderman Caldwell, you asked to have this brought to committee of the whole, so do you have questions regarding it?
Sure, yeah, thanks for coming to answer questions. I guess I just wanted to start off just by asking, like, what motivated adding this role? I know that there was the previous role that had been vacant for years, and now we're trying to kinda revive it, but with a new title and different responsibilities, so I guess I'm just curious to hear the motivation for that in the first place.
Well, I mean, we've got our finance director here, so she could discuss what her and I talked about regarding this. Monica, you wanna do it, or me? Go ahead.
What about now? So, when I first came here, I did a kinda overview of the department, and I don't know if you've known, but Berwyn has grown over the past years. In, in the midst of that, I would go into meetings, and sometimes we would kinda be, I wanna say, in arrears on certain postings and things of that nature. We have a payroll person, accounts, accounting manager, accounts payable, and now we have a senior accountant, which I changed the title from a staff accountant to a senior accountant, and then we had an assistant finance director and myself, the finance director. But as I noticed, different things weren't being done that needed to be completed. So with that being said, we wanna make sure that I, we restructure the department to make sure that everything is in line. I don't know if you know, we went to a new online system where you receive your W2s and your wage statements online. That alleviates some pressure off of Tiffany. Back maybe six months ago, we also lost Dan Denny's, who was a financial advisor, who advised Ben and myself on a lot. We learned from him. Now we're taking on, mainly with Ben, a lot of those responsibilities, so we did lose that person. We also lost, I don't know if you know, a person who was doing automatic things and everything, and doing reconciliation. So with that being said, we have a person that's taking on all of those duties from Sharon, and also other duties, and then also with Dan Denny's gone, we have Ben taking on some of those duties, and then everything that I have to do. So we incorporated the comptroller position within that, because of course, we don't have the city collector.
So is the idea that those other roles would be closed, and this would then kinda take its place, or would those other roles also be, need to be filled?
Which roles?
The people who you mentioned who had left?
Those roles are not gonna be filled?
No, they won't be.
Dan Denny's was a financial advisor. If we need one, Ben has a gentleman that he's worked with in the past that can be a financial advisor, but they're doing it on contract.
Right.
That's only if we need it.
And we're trying to learn and take on a lot of those things ourself, so that we don't have to outsource, and that's the reason being. So you see now, you have Claudia and you have Ben, both assistant. Claudia remaining that position, which a lot of people didn't know this, you know, we were leaving it as after he got appointed, or, you know, that went through as the comptroller. So there'll be myself, the comptroller, assistant finance director, you'll still have the payroll, accounts payable, a senior accountant. So as of right now, I'm just trying to do a restructuring to make sure that everybody, we can complete everything without being into a stressful realm. When we come to the end of the year, and we're closing out our books, when we come to doing buybacks, we have a lot of stress going on, and I'm just trying to minimize that and make sure all the work is done across the board. And that's why the position was added as comptroller.
So this is not a new position, it's a retitling of Ben's current position, and defining the duties that are falling underneath that position, so that she could have more organization in the duties that each one's doing down there.
So would that then mean that the assistant finance director is becoming the city comptroller, and there will no longer be an assistant finance director?
No, Claudia Hernandez is now the assistant finance director. So before I came, she was actually assisting Ben on a lot of duties. So because I felt like her strength that she brings to the city of Berwyn is, and she's an asset, so now she's the assistant finance director, and Ben will be the comptroller.
Okay, so this job is being created for Ben?
It's actually, if you look into the ordinance, we had a city collector?
Yeah.
And we're changing it to a comptroller.
To hire Ben?
Yes, to, just a title change, he's already here, we're just doing a title change, yeah.
All the people that, that were already here just have different title changes, that's all. It's the same people.
So no change in head?
No.
No, there's no change.
In fact, we lost, as she said, we lost two.
We actually did, and if y'all know, I've been taking on the automatic expenses for right now, making sure, but that's gonna be re-given to somebody else, I don't know who now, but we're just still trying to work as a team to make sure everything gets done.
Mr. Mayor, just to put it a little bit more structure, so it's just pretty much as a part of the department, it's just restructuring.
Yeah, just, just a little.
Fire marshal to a battalion chief, this completely just renaming.
Correct, no new positions.
Just renaming.
Renaming and putting specific duties under each different title, so that's, that's what she's organizing downstairs.
Yeah, yeah, just a reorganization, just a reorganization to make sure that we can handle everything that we need to handle with the growth of the city of Berwyn.
So just to kinda, I'm sorry, I know I keep asking lots of questions.
It's fine.
The finance department's FTE would stay the same, like?
Well, the F, what do we have, seven? So that, so before, Claudia Hernandez was here as a contractor. So we actually were paying out more money as a contractor, and then we had Sharon DeGrange, who had her duties. So we actually, Sharon DeGrange, I'm sorry, is no longer here, and then Claude, Claudia is taken as assistant finance director, so we actually lost one FTE. So it's kinda balancing out.
No more contract personnel?
No more contract personnel, just.
Saving one of the personnel?
Certain, certain.
Or one less, actually.
One less, actually, with just Sharon, right. And then, as I say, I've been taking on a lot of Sharon's duty, Claudia took on a lot of Sharon's duty, and so we're just trying to reorganize and make sure everything is done. And then, you know, like I stated, nobody's here with us with the budget, the buybacks, the end of the year stuff that we have to get out across the board to the police department, the fire department, and my staff, ten toes down, handles everything.
And if you count the financial advisor that was pretty much, while he was a contractor, he was pretty much all the time, we don't have his services all the time anymore, because Ben's already taken over most of that.
Yeah, and we're working with our STFO, our investments and everything, Ben and I do the meetings and all of that, so then we, unless we need to get advice, then we reach out for advice. But we're trying to make sure that we can handle everything within the city of Berwyn, City Hall now.
Everything's gonna be done in-house?
In-house.
There we go.
Yep, unless, I wanna make sure.
Unless you need some advice.
Unless we need advising on something, that we don't have maybe the knowledge, experience, or whatever we need to make sure it gets done.
As far as bonding?
Correct.
As far as bonding, those are, so, the contracting out, if we have.
There is a possibility with, with bonding that we, the expertise that we don't possess, that's where that need could arise, or we're doing our best.
I mean, we still have the securitization, which is in place. If we don't do do any type of bonding, we have not necessarily just the contract person if we want, the one gentleman that Ben knows, that would be on a case-by-case basis only, but we also have some other people that have knowledge, people at the BDC that have knowledge about bonding too, that might be able to utilize too. So it all depends on what we're looking at. And Libby's gonna learn that all real quick, too.
Any more questions?
Yeah, can I just get some, like, basic clarification? What is Ben's current title?
He's the assistant finance director.
Okay, that's also Claudia's current title, we've got two right now.
Correct, right, well, we act, well, because we had to change the ordinance and we had to get everything in line, and she had been working, and I wanted to take her off a contractor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And move her into the city of Berwyn, so we had to just kinda, and then of course, there was a transition period that she was working with Ben on things then, so once this hopefully gets approved, then there'll just be one assistant finance director and a comptroller.
Okay, and?
But that was a hired position, the comptroller would be a pointed position.
Right, I got it, I'm good. And then the, so with this position, what can we expect for a salary?
It's the same salary he's got now.
Same salary.
Yeah, the same, the only thing that's getting changed is the title.
Correct.
Right, it's the title, that's all.
Okay. And, okay, do we, do we have to like post this job publicly, or is it just like?
No, we're just changing his title, he's got the job, he's just changing the title.
We're just changing the title, it was an appointed position.
So we're changing the title?
Mm-hmm.
There's another position that we lost of Sharon?
Correct.
That we are not going to refill that?
No.
And those duties are gonna kick up to?
The comptroller responsibilities be different from like an assistant finance director, you know, in terms of daily operations, that kinda thing?
Well.
There's some duties that we, you know, for example, our actual, you know, our police and fire, we have, you know, like I mentioned, when someone's gotta be involved with actual error reports, to make sure they're right of verification, there's also a long-term strategic planning. These are all the duties that are, are former financial advisors, are under, those are some of the things that I would have to address, the assistant finance director, that's outside of this.
Right, yeah, assistant finance director does more reconciliations and things of that nature, more transactional, you know, performance and duties and things of that nature, which Ben had transitioned from that, and Claudia will be doing. And that's what I was telling you before about how we have a mass of actual journal entries and everything that has to be done, that we need to make sure that we staying in line, we need to make sure we record our revenue on time, we need to make sure that our expenses are recorded online, because we have quarterly meetings with our department heads, and we wanna make sure that once we get our books closed from year to year, and we start the new year, and the audit does everything, we wanna make sure that we stay online with what we're doing within that year.
You know, the other, the other thing we always gotta be prepared for is perhaps future rating calls, and, you know, our financial statements have gotta be presented in the fashion that external stakeholders have gotta be able to interpret and be able to gauge as far as city's financial position.
Any other questions?
For, for my end, yeah, so, two questions. Monica, you had alluded to perhaps some things maybe being missed necessarily, but being passed by, needed to catch up, could you tell a little bit more about that in terms of maybe that's been put into jeopardy? That why this would be advantageous to have that comptroller position to leave that in charge, to make sure we're hitting those deadlines?
Right, so when I stated about the journal entries and things of that, you know, we do everything paperly, paperly here, is that what you're saying? We do, you know, and we're trying to move out of a paperly world into more of a computerized world. So when a journal entry is done, we have one accountant manager, which is Judy, Judy Burns, she does a lot of postings for grants, for the corporate dollars, all on her own. We need to deviate that out. When I first came here, I noticed that as time went on, we've grown, and there could be some overwhelm, so with the assistant finance director and a senior accountant, they can take on some of that, and then Ben can take on the things, as he said, what he's doing now with the reconciliation and posting journal entries and things of that nature. So this transitions the department across the board.
The, the danger of what you're talking about is always there.
Yeah.
What she's trying to do is make sure that it's almost non-existent.
Right, because we, we, sometimes we do get in arrears, you know what I mean? We get in arrears, and we're trying to make sure that we're not six months in arrears, or four months in arrears, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, that's what I noticed when I came here, because it has grown, but our staff hadn't grown. And that's why we had a contractor with Claudia coming in to assist in doing reconciliation. We have bank accounts, we have Chase credit cards, we have all these things, we have collectors getting revenue for parking tickets and everything that have to have deposits, that we physically have to go into the bank and reconcile. So we just wanna make sure that everything that we need to do is being done in Berwyn, and minimize the contractor, and minimize all of the advising from outside.
Thank you, and my second question, somewhat in a, in a different vein, in terms of the increase in the procurement of, is it okay to talk about right now?
Sure, go ahead, it's all the same ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm of the, of the mindset that we rely on friends' expertise as a CPA to make that recommendation, and can you speak a little bit more about why that would be advantageous for the city to be in line with what the state procurement practices are, from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, excluding public work, is that fair enough?
You're talking, he's talking about the bidding portion, that we, of the ordinance.
The bidding portion.
Well, well, you know, I think the existing threshold, you know, has been in place for about ten, fifteen years.
Ever since I've been here, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Thirty years.
And being able to, you know, efficiently, you know, process various, you know, invoices, and making sure our responsiveness too, with our existing vendor base, if something happens, an emergency happens, being able to, you know, get, get things resolved and repaired without having to go through that open bidding process of ten thousand dollars.
Right, we just need a bigger, we need a bigger amount of money that we can work with, funds that we can work with, instead of having that ten thousand dollar cap.
How often do we run into that issue where you, you know, you have something that's over ten thousand, and now it has to go out to bid, and maybe that slows down?
Just kinda depends on what the department needs. You have the fire department, they might need something for ambulance, I mean, it just varies, but we do get a slowdown, and then as we're waiting, the prices are increasing.
Alderman, you had something?
Yeah, I mean, from my experience when past council and working for the municipality, I mean, I understand this, I mean, the state is recommending, I mean, it has a twenty-five thousand, it's no joke, I mean, guys, compare what you used to shop six, six, four years ago, I mean, it's, it's crazy expensive. I mean, now, as you stated, any kind of apparatus or any kind of. I mean, now, as you stated, any kind of apparatus or any kind of thing that you might be purchasing, they tack on time, they tack on money to all this. There might be a repair that needs to be done. It's not a so-called emergency, but there might be a repair that might need to be addressed and that they all of a sudden need to come back to City Council to get approved and bids. And also, I mean, twenty-five thousand, I think, is respectful. Uh, I really truly do. And I think that's something that we can work along with. Then if something comes up a little bigger, then you got to maybe come into City Council for that.
Right.
So, I mean, that just makes this really common sense on this.
The bidding process takes months, so...
Yeah.
It's not like something that can be done really quickly because you have to, first you have to get approval to go out of it, then you have to put the advertisement out, then you have to have sufficient time to have it advertised, then you have to have the bids come in, then you have to do all the reviews. So it's not something that can be done really quickly. It's a long, timely thing. So, like you said, prices are up and that's what it is.
Do, do we know how often we run, run into that? Kind of rebuttal to Mike's question, so is, on a monthly basis? Is this a couple of times a year? Are we talking, you know, this...
Every weekly.
Weekly, right?
Uh, no, it's not weekly, but it actually just depends on what the department needs. A lot of times they try to budget and know that in a, you know, I'm gonna need this, but it's gonna take me to twenty-twenty-seven to get it. So we try to prepare for it, so, but it's not weekly. This is actually what the department needs. So, and more or less, the Police Department, the Fire Department and Public Works, those are the ones that have the big-ticket items.
And Police and Fire, a lot of their stuff is done through the compact, so it's already bid out.
Mm-hmm.
But for Public Works, that doesn't occur. And when you have a Public Works project, those costs, especially with materials nowadays, that's, that's what's really hurting. Now, Public Works actually, um, I believe was higher. I think they're up to thirty thousand because of the cost of materials. I'm sorry, you had something?
Well, I was gonna say, it's, it's not like it's a shell game. It's not like they're not gonna be able to say, oh, it's like they're gonna spend twenty-four thousand and you're not gonna be able to have money, look, because, one, there isn't a lot of you can ask any questions. You want, two, before anything else, so, and three, you got the, the agenda, the bills that come out there, you see the checks flying around, uh, you get us the treasure. It is, it's, it's transparency is very important, right? One hundred percent support it. But at the same time, better government can expedite the, the, the speed of movement on something, especially for Police, Fire, or Public Works, or maybe for some agencies. I don't know, I really don't know. But in today's day, anything can pop up, and twenty-five thousand dollars goes like this into the council. My city, sorry.
Do you have something? Alderman, Pabon, did you have something?
No.
Any other questions? Okay, I have nothing else for committee of the whole. That, uh, that ordinance is up on the agenda for this evening. So we'll see you all back at eight o'clock. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Carmichael, Mike, Pabon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, yes, have it. See you back at eight o'clock.
I don't know college that has, I'll ask.
It's only her somewhere. I started putting up a stop just like this. Teddy was outside, I zinged out. It's gotta be the head. It's an alcohol service. You gotta take your headphones off in this outfit. You gotta take my headphones off. It's like they told me on kind of a roundabout way, don't pay attention to where you're at on the stage. And so it means, not today's day there. And so it means what are you supposed to be when you are? There you go, there you go. It's like you're letting it air fall. Well, it's no way. I think all of our divisions from that same year. That's fine, that's good. Oh, you got it wrong. But they were hitting for the opposition, you know, twelve tops. Like much of the candidates, you can't, you can't compare it to higher and higher. Oh, you make the choice, it's okay. If it's New Orleans, it's, it's safer. My neighbor thought right there because there's probably a few trees on the whole thing. We're not going to New Orleans. It's funny, the coverage was handled.
So I'm just moving to.
It's everybody. So what do you say?
Yeah, yeah. Don't. Move to watch. Please. I'm sure.
Clerk Garcia, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Good afternoon. Caldwell?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Leha?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon?
Here.
Palaszczak?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Eight present mayor.
If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers the family of Gregory James Loscola. He's the grandfather of our, I'm sorry, father of one of our borough firefighters, Lorraine Posenka. And, but also a little celebration for the birth of Leilani Tapia, whose parents both work at the Berwind Library, Jesse Tapia and Denise Rigosa. Also, please keep the men and women we have on the street tonight in our prayers. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the mic, the podium. State your name and address, please.
Hi, good. My name is Jose Ramirez. I live on 31st and Clarence. Today I'm here to represent Bungalow, which represents, which stands for Berlin United, the annual lesbian organization. As you know, June, we come, we go into Pride Month, and I'm here just to fill everybody in on some of the events we have in June for Pride Month. Wednesday, June 4th, from six to seven thirty, there'll be a film screening at the Berwind Public Library. Beyond the Frame will explore queer narratives in three short films. There will be a discussion afterwards that will be led by Don Paul, who introduced the films, and is a DePaul University Film Professor. On Saturday, June twenty first, we present our Seventh Annual Pride Ride Carp Parade. The lineup will begin at Thirty-seventh and Skolbell at eleven thirty. We take off at noon. The ride will hit all eight wards, and will end up at Berwind's newest establishment, Outfit Sports Bar and Eatery. On Tuesday, June twenty fourth, rather proud of this myself, at six o'clock, the Friends of the Berwind Public Library will host a celebration of Bungalow's thirtieth anniversary. And also to celebrate the pathway to knowledge, Brick Walk. And then finally, on Saturday, June twenty eighth, we will end Pride Month with the Berwind Pride Walk. Starting at noon, we line up at Windsor and Harlem and walk down Windsor to East Avenue, where we have a small block party planned. There will be DJ, community organizations, games for families and kids, contests. And I'm also here to ask council members if they would be kind enough to donate a hundred dollars to Bungalow, which will cover the gains for the families and the contest prizes. Those donations can go to the BUC on behalf, on behalf of Bungalow Plus. What I'm most proud of this year is that these events are a cooperation between Bungalow Plus, the Berwind Development Corporation, the Berwind Public Library, with the Friends of the Berwind Public Library, and the City of Berwind. What we hope, we hope all residents will participate and join us. Everybody is welcome. And what we want to do is show the world what Berwind pride really means. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Anybody else for open forum?
Hi, everyone. Janelle King. I'm in the community.
Yeah.
I am secretary with the nonprofit here in Berwind, AWAKE, which was started in twenty fifteen to aid in resident justice, leadership, and conducting our community. This initially started with our immigrant neighbors and has reached throughout our community with education, such as our summer reading programs and summer field trips and social and cultural issues. I'm here to announce our upcoming fundraiser that we have, our Night of Music. This is June sixth, Friday. It will be held at the Jokelis Center over at Sixteenth in Harlem. Our summer field trips have included in the past the Amber Science Industry, Field Exams, Shutter Aquarium, Peggy Notifier, Nature Exam, just to name a few. And this is offered free or charged to families here in Berwind. For our fundraiser will be food, great local music, mingling, and silent ruffles also. If I can, I can leave this information here for anyone that speaks to us.
If you leave it with the clerk, we'll get it up, yeah.
Sure, will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Omar Bello. I'm an outreach ambassador for the City of Berwind's Community Leadership Department. I am a resident of the fourth ward and a student at Moreham West. Being here means a lot to me, not just as a student, but as someone who's interested in learning more about the government and helping out in the community. This opportunity to enter here is something I take very seriously. I look forward to growing, helping out, and being involved in the community in any way I can. As an outreach ambassador, I hope to spread the word about upcoming events and important needs to all residents, whether it's hanging out fires, organizing community events, or doing lives on social media. My goal is to keep residents informed and involved. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Xavier Palajas. I am a first ward resident, and I'm currently a student at Moreham West High School, as well as one of the outreach ambassadors for the City of Berwind. I'm very eager and excited to work with the City of Berwind, not only to help inform residents of any upcoming events, but to ensure residents are informed about the current opportunities and services provided by the City of Berwind. I have always been inspired by activists, specifically those involved in JSA, a student activist organization in Moreham West High School. I have seen many people who take an activism, do what they can to make a change in our community in a way it has inspired me to do what I can to help those in need and play my part. That is why I wanted to become a part of this, be part of the City of Berwind team. I'll do what I can and make sure if I provide any type of assistance to my friends, family, and neighbors. Thank you all for this opportunity. As an ambassador, I am excited to continue learning and ensure that our community stays strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. This is the council. I'm Division Chief Scott Wasek with Fire Department, Department of Emergency Management. I am here to promote an exciting new collaborative program between the Fire Department, the Police Department, and Cook County Emergency Management Agency regarding the Community Emergency Response Team. It's the kickoff that we have launched as of today. It's also known as CERT. This program is designed to teach residents basic skills like, like search and rescue, first aid, how to use a fire extinguisher, and basic triage. The idea behind it is to give community members the tools to assist their neighbors and first responders before, during, and after an emergency. CERT is an eight-week program that will run Tuesday nights from six to nine PM at the Police Department, starting August nineteenth. At the end of the program, there's a field exercise and a graduation. After graduation, members of the team will be given opportunities to volunteer at many of the city's events like Matriarch Five K, the Route sixty-six Car Show, and October Class, as well as community events within Cook County, such as Major League Sports events and the Chicago Marathon. These volunteer hours can be applied towards special tax credit for emergency services. And if they reach a hundred hours within a year, they can get a five hundred dollar tax credit. So there's some incentive as well. Anyone who is sixteen or older, lives in Berwind, can grab a pamphlet outside here, or go on the city's social media or website, and then scan the QR code inside of it. The class is limited to fifty people for the inaugural kickoff. A copy of this information is all in here, and I implore you to send it out, pass it along to any of your constituents, any of your residents, and any community groups that might be interested in joining us. My direct contact info is on that form as well, so everybody who has questions can always reach out and ask for, or reach me.
Scotty, did you tell them the fee?
Uh, no, it is free. It is free of charge. Cook County has graciously given us all the resources to hold the class. They're going to be teaching it for us. I will be there to facilitate along with the Police Department for their, their aspects of it, and the Fire Department for ours as well. So it is completely here, don't hesitate, and it is just, it's good training and good information for everybody to have.
Okay, thank you, Scotty. Anybody else from the audience? Alderman, anything for open forum?
Yesterday was Memorial Day. I would like to give a shout out to all the men and women that give their utmost importance to their own lives for this country. Many residents from Berwind were serving the military. And I also want to applaud our first responders, our police and fire that protect our residents. So I appreciate everything that you guys do and everything that you guys put online also. So, God bless everybody.
Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else for open forum?
Yes. In an effort to bring residents and activities back to the Debo District now that it's just about finished. I'm hosting a Retire the Flag Ceremony with the City of Berwind Scouts, Combined Veterans of Berwind, and O'Briens Cleaners on May thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, nine AM at O'Briens Cleaners, sixty-nine fifteen Stanley Avenue. All are welcome.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to say a few things about some events that happened last week. So just want to thank everybody who came out to our Third Annual Youth Opportunity Fair. I want to thank Serco, Central State Seer, Ebenezer Church, Youth Crossroads, one of our newest partners, and Berwind Fire Department for coming out amongst many other employers and organizations in the community. We were able to support over a hundred and twenty youth, at least at our last count, which is really great. So thank you to everybody that came out to that. Also want to thank Housing Forward and the Berwind Public Library for their partnership in putting together a panel discussion last week on the state of homelessness and what's going on right now at the federal level around the skinny budget, what's been termed the skinny budget, and the impact that it's going to have on different social services across our city, our state, our country. And so thank you for the around thirty people that came out to listen to experts talk about the impact and what we can do as a community to support unhoused folks, as well as renters and folks who are, you know, just hurting right now financially amidst what's going on on the national level. So thank you to everybody who got civically engaged and came out and supported these efforts.
Okay, thank you. Nobody else? All right, Item C one, please.
Item C one are the minutes of the city council from the first meeting of May thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
At this time, I would like to amend the regular city council meetings of May thirteen, the first meeting, H one, to reflect motion passed, six to one vote.
Second.
Motion by Alasia, seconded by Fay to amend H one of the first meeting of May thirteenth to show the vote as six to one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion on the minutes as amended?
Be my motion to approve the minutes as amended for the first meeting.
Second.
Motion by Fay, seconded by Pavone to approve the meetings of the, minutes of the meeting of May thirteenth as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item C two, please.
Item C two are the minutes of the city council, second meeting on May thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
Be my motion to approve the regular city council meetings of May thirteen, twenty twenty-five, second meeting.
Second.
Motion by Fay, seconded by Pavone to approve the minutes of the second meeting of May thirteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman Alasia, do you have a motion?
Yes, at this time I would like to make a motion to bring up J five.
Second.
Motion by Alasia, seconded by Carmichael to bring up item J five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J five, please.
Item J five is a communication from Fire Chief Caniglio introducing and requesting the swearing-in of Xavier Rendon.
I move that we accept this communication from Fire Chief Chris Caniglio introducing Xavier Rendon and taking the oath of office as a probationary firefighter paramedic with a start date of May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five as informational.
Second.
Motion by Alasia, seconded by Palaczek to approve the communication from Chief Caniglio with the start of Xavier Rendon as a probationary firefighter paramedic as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Xavier?
Do you, Xavier Rendon, having been appointed to the rank of probationary paramedic firefighter for the City of Berwind Fire Department in the County of Cook, of Forsyth, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of assistant finance, according to the best of your ability?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Xavier. Item F one, please.
F one is an ordinance deferred from May thirteen, twenty twenty-five, from the second meeting, amending Chapter two twenty-eight point zero-two, composition of the Finance Department, Chapter two twenty-eight point zero-five, contracts and purchases, and Chapter two twenty-eight point eleven, city controller of the codified ordinances of Berwind for the City of Berwind, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
Be my motion, concur with the mayor in approval order in amending Chapter two-two-eight point zero-two, composition of the Finance Department, Chapter two-two-eight zero-five, contracts and purchases, Chapter two-two-eight point one-one, city controller of the codified ordinances, City of Berwind, for the City of Illa, of Berwind, County of Cook, State of Illinois. Have the corporate authorities affixed the necessary signatures and pass it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Fay, seconded by Alasia to concur with the amending of the ordinance, Chapter two-two-eight point oh-two, two-two-eight point oh-five, and two-two-eight point one-one, fix the necessary signatures and place on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call to roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
Leha?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Pavone?
Aye.
Palaszczak?
Aye.
Brockman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes are mayor.
Motion carried. Item F two, please.
F two is a proclamation recognizing the month of June as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Berwind, and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness of our roadways. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and street of our city and state, and the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And motorcycle, and whereas motorcycles are primary common and economical means of transportation and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadway and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the Members of Abates of Illinois Inc., a brotherhood aimed towards education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and to the general public in our city and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over a hundred and twenty thousand participants in Illinois over the past nine years. And whereas, all motorcyclists should join Abates of Illinois Inc. in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of our city and state. And whereas, the Motorcyclists of Illinois state, and whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations, and whereas during the month of June, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the City of Berwyn and through the great state of Illinois. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Lovero and the Alderman of the City of Berwyn, in recognition of thirty years of Abate of Illinois Inc. and over three hundred and fifty-two, three hundred and eighteen thousand registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the united role, serve as leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of June this year, twenty-twenty-five, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Berwyn, and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve the safety and awareness on our roadways, dated this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-five.
Yes, it'd be my motion to thank Abate and congratulate them, and adopt the proclamation, and have the corporate authorities fix the necessary signatures and pass it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Fay, seconded by Palacek, to thank Abate for the thirty-eight years of service in motorcycle safety, adopt the proclamation, fix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I think we have a member of Abate here to accept the proclamation. Congratulations. Thank you so much for taking that back to the organization, okay?
Thank you.
F three is a resolution from the Mayor related to North Berwyn Park District corrida del mariachi five-k run on August sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. The resolution states, whereas the North Berwyn Park District will hold their sixth annual corrida del mariachi five-k run on Saturday, August sixteen, twenty-twenty-five, between eight A.M. and ten A.M., and whereas Berwyn City Council granted permission on May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five, for this aforesaid activity, and whereas it is the objective of the city to provide a safe environment for residents and visitors, and whereas the five-k run will begin at Sixteenth Street and proceed to East Avenue, Sirmack Road, Riverside Drive, Combe Avenue, Fourteenth Street, and Clinton Avenue, before returning to Sixteenth Street at Wesley, and whereas the Berwyn Police Department will have officers controlling traffic on the scheduled route with special attention paid to the major intersections. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and the members of the Berwyn City Council to grant permission for this annual event and to extend to all its participants our best wishes for good weather and a safe, fun run.
Mr. Mayor, be my motion to adopt this resolution and authorize our corporate authorities to affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to adopt the resolution, affix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do you have another motion on the floor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can we please, motion to bring up J five?
Second.
Nope, sorry, J four.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Carmichael, to bring forward J four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J four, please.
J four is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia, granting permission for North Berwyn Park District to host their annual five-k run and all associated events on August sixteen, twenty-twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, be my motion to approve the agreement that the Berwyn Police Department gives her permissions and authorize the corporate authorities to affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to accept the communication from Chief Semaglia as informational and approve the five-k run, as well as the parade, although, as well as the party, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I one, uh, J one, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I did miss I one.
I one is a communication from Alderman Leha submitting a proclamation recognizing the contributions of crossing guards to public safety in the community and proclaiming May twenty-twenty-five as Crossing Guard Appreciation Month in the City of Berwyn.
Alderman, would you like her to read the communication?
Yes.
I think that's what he's waiting for, buddy.
Okay. On May nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, the City of Berwyn proclaimed Crossing Guard Appreciation Day in Illinois in the City of Berwyn, in line with Governor J.B. Pritzer's declaration. Whereas, on May nineteen, twenty-twenty-four, in recognition of the dedication and leadership of the Berwyn Police Department's Crossing Guard team, led by Crossing Guard Supervisor Margaret M. Susbina, I'm sorry, Susbina, were issued certificates of acknowledgement for every team member from the Office of Mayor Robert J. Lovero, and whereas Crossing Guards provide a critical service to Berwyn families, serviced by helping children, families, and community members safely cross streets near schools and intersections throughout the city, and whereas Crossing Guards serve as trusted public safety professionals who perform their duties with courage, patience, and unwavering dedication in all weather conditions, day after day, and whereas their service offers peace of mind to parents and caregivers, encouraging more families to walk, bike, and roll to school, which promotes active and healthy lifestyles, reduces traffic congestions and environmental impacts near school zones, and whereas the City of Berwyn deeply values and appreciates the exceptional work of Crossing Guards who protect our most vulnerable pedestrians, contribute to the sense of community, and reinforce the values of responsibility, courtesy, and care. And now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Mayor Robert J. Lovero and the City of Berwyn Council members hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-five as Crossing Guard Appreciation Month in the City of Berwyn to honor Berwyn's Crossing Guards and encourage all Berwyn residents to celebrate their contributions to the public safety of our community, dated this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-five.
I move that we adopt the proclamation recognizing the contributions of Crossing Guards to public safety in the community and proclaiming May twenty, May twenty-twenty-five as Crossing Guard Appreciation Month in the city, authorize the corporate authorities to affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. Second.
Motion by Laja, seconded by Bowman, to adopt the proclamation and thank all the Crossing Guards for their, for their work here in the City of Berwyn, and proclaim May two thousand twenty-five as Crossing Guard Appreciation Month, fix the necessary signatures and place on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman, you have something else?
Yes, for the Crossing Guards that are here, as I call your name, please come up to receive your certificate and special commemorative cookie made by Old Fashioned Candies of Berwyn exclusively for our Crossing Guards. Jermaine Dawkins.
Item J one, please.
Item J one is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca requesting authorization to settle twenty-three WC zero-one-nine-seven-five-three in the amount of a hundred, one hundred thousand dollars.
Be my motion, concur with City Attorney Bertucca, settle case two-three WC zero-one-nine-seven-five-three in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars based on City Council authority granted in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Fay, seconded by Pabon, to accept the communication from City Attorney Bertucca and approve the one hundred thousand on the above-captured workers' comp cases, case as approved by the executive session of the City Council. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
Leha?
Aye.
Um, Bates?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Palacek?
Aye.
Brockman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight, eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J two, please.
Item J two is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia of Saint Leonard's End-of-School Year Celebration on June sixth, twenty-twenty-five. City services required.
I move that we accept this communication from Police Chief Michael Semaglia regarding the Saint Leonard End-of-School Year Celebration on June sixth, twenty-twenty-five, eight A.M. to one P.M. as informational. Second.
Second. Motion by Laja, seconded by Caldwell, to accept the communication for the Saint Leonard's End-of-Year School Parade as informational and provide the city services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J three, please.
J three is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia on the Corpus Christi Religious Procession Parade on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, from Saint Leonard in Berwyn to Saint Pius in Stickney. City services required.
I move that we accept this communication from Police Chief Michael Semaglia regarding the Saint Leonard Corpus Christi Parade on Sunday, June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, from two forty-five P.M. to four thirty P.M., processing from Saint Leonard in Berwyn to Saint Pius in Stickney as informational. Second.
Motion by Laja, seconded by Bowman, to accept the communication from Chief Semaglia approving the Corpus Christi Parade from Saint Leonard's to, um, where's the other school?
Saint Pius.
Saint Pius, as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J six, please.
Item J six is a communication from Finance Director Martin declaring a twenty-fifteen Chevy Tahoe from the Police Department as surplus inventory.
Be my motion to approve this recommendation by Director Martin to declare a vehicle from the Police Department as surplus inventory as informational.
Second.
Motion from Pabon, seconded by Laja, to consider the communication from Director Martin, considering the two thousand fifteen Chevy Tahoe as surplus property as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J seven, please.
Item J seven is a communication from Communication Director Ayala for authorization to proceed with the Independence Day Celebration fireworks on July third, twenty-twenty-five, at Morton West High School. City services required.
Mayor, I move to accept with the communication from Communications Director Ayala regarding the authorization to proceed with Independence Day Celebration fireworks on Thursday, July third, twenty-twenty-five, at Morton West High School. City services required, and special thanks to Mr. Benson at the world's largest laundromat.
Second.
Motion by Brockman, seconded by Pabon, to take the communication from City Communications Department Claudia Ayala and approve the July third, Thursday, July third, Fourth of July celebration at Morton West, and special thanks to Tom Benson, provide, from a world's largest laundromat, provide all the city services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J eight, please.
J eight is a communication from Director Ayala regarding Berwyn Fire Department Emergency Management Division Emergency Response Team, the CERT program.
I move that we accept this communication from the Communication Director Claudia Ayala regarding the Fire Department Emergency Management Division Program as informational.
Second.
Motion by Laja, seconded by Palacek, to consider the CERT program communication from Director Ayala as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda?
Be my motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Fay, seconded by Laja, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All the manate committee meetings, Alderman Kova?
Call the chair.
Alderman Bowman?
Call the chair.
Alderman Laja?
Call up the chair.
Alderman Fay?
Call the chair.
Alderman Pabon?
Uh, just want to let folks know that I'll be having a fifth ward meeting at Las Cuecas on Saturday, June fourteen, uh, yeah, fourteenth, eleven A.M. to one P.M. Uh, Las Cuecas is on sixty-three-eleven Sirmack Road. It'll be an opportunity to meet your neighbors and hear about what's going on in the ward along with what's going on in the city.
Alderman Palacek?
Call the chair.
Alderman Brockman?
Call the chair.
Alderman Carmichael?
Call the chair. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Carmichael, seconded by Brockman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.